Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Finance and Physical Resources Committee. Today's date is Tuesday, September 15, 2015, and the time is 8:30 a.m. We'll begin today's meeting with public comment. Is there anybody that wishes to address the committee? I see none, so we will move to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt our consent agenda?
So moved.
By Commissioner Borges and support by Commissioner Morgan. Are there any questions or comments on the consent agenda? I see none, so all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion passes. We next have an action item by the Administrator's Office regarding K-Connect.
This is a request to recommend to the Board to approve a contract in the amount of $25,000 annually for three years between K-Connect and Kent County. As part of its effort to coordinate human services and improve macro-level outcomes, the Kent County Family and Children's Coordinating Council formed a committee to consider creating a collective impact strategy for the county. One of the subcommittee, one of the committee recommendations was the creation of K-Connect, an independent nonprofit organization to serve as the backbone organization that is responsible for, among other activities, the establishment of community data dashboard, facilitating work groups and sharing annual progress on data outcomes. The contract has been reviewed and approved as deformed by Assistant Corporate Counsel.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Commissioner Mass?
So moved.
Is there support by Commissioner Morgan? Questions or comments? Commissioner Coleman?
Just a quick question probably for Matthew. So it seems like a great idea, a great program, good result of this committee recommendation. It's just not totally clear to me, what's the amount of work being done for this, $25,000?
Right. So this is a part of a collaborative of funding. So our funding will go specifically for the dashboard creation and the facilitation of the work groups, and it will be combined with other funders, private primarily, to accomplish the broader agenda. So we're part of a collaborative.
A pool that's funding this consultant's work for that year.
Right, yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Mass? Could I just, so how much, how much more from the prevention initiative do we put towards this program?
This is our only contract, and this comes out of the evaluation fund.
Okay.
The prevention initiative has an evaluation line, and we're taking $25,000 from that line to support this broader community work.
We have roughly 1.6 in the prevention initiative budget.
Correct.
Where's the rest of it?
Well, we have funding specifically allocated for home visiting services, so Healthy Start and Bright Beginnings. We provide substance abuse services through Network 180 and the FAP program, and then we support the Kent School Services Network. And then we have about $100,000 total for evaluation, which goes right now to support the community evaluation of our home visiting services.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bukowski?
Real quick question then comment. What, what is the source of the prevention initiative budget?
General funds.
Okay. That's awesome. Because my comment following up on Commissioner Coleman's saying that this seems like a good thing, my observations are a few notches above that. I believe that very much because I've had the opportunity to be part of it through my day job. And to quote Commissioner Vanderbil, and who's not here to defend himself, when K-Connect made a presentation, his comment was, "This is the kind of stuff the county should be investing in." Because it really does take that wider perspective, starts to identify the bad turf wars, the good turf wars, and really focusing on how are we all in this together. My only disappointment is that it's, we can only find $25,000 because the more time and effort we have on such things, the further and faster they go. So, yeah, that's my only small disappointment, but K-Connect's an Austin thing, and we should be investing general fund in it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I see none. Thank you, Matthew.
Thanks.
All in favor of this agenda item indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move then to Agenda Item Number Four, which is an action request from Fiscal Services.
This is a request to recommend to the Board to establish appropriations from estimated sources to the special revenue funds with term dates beginning October 1, 2015, to September 30, 2016. Finance and Physical Resources Committee meant to review the recommended special revenue fund budgets for the October 1 budget year. The Board of Commissioners held a work session on September 10 regarding the recommended special revenue fund budgets. The estimated total sources and appropriations for the revenue fund budgets are noted in the action request and include the Health Fund, Child Care Fund, both Circuit Court and the Department of Health and Human Services, Front of the Court Special Projects Veterans Trust. The total appropriation amounts to $71.4 million, of which $26.2 million is a general fund appropriation.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Borges, is there support? Support Commissioner Bukowski? Just as noted in the resolution, this is the same material that we went over at our last work session and then had a session with the whole Board of Commissioners at our last meeting. Any questions or comments on this? Fisher Jones?
Thank you, Chair. Could you just explain the $55 in reserves? What, what is that for special projects? I missed that.
Okay, I'll have Marvin. There are reserves in all of the special funds, okay? And there may be some excess reserves that we need to appropriate, but Marvin?
Good morning.
Good morning, Marvin.
This particular case, $55 is interesting. It was, it was not planned or budgeted for. It came in over and above the budget estimate. So in order to, you know, to spend those funds, we have to appropriate it. So anytime you get unplanned revenues in a, in a project, it builds up reserves that aren't appropriated. In order to spend them, you gotta appropriate them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions or comments? I see none, so we'll call the questions. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Then move to Agenda Item Number Five, which is an action request by Fiscal Services.
This is a request to recommend to the Board to approve Fifth Third Bank Letter of Credit with amendments up to a limit of $1.4 million, excuse me, and to authorize the Department of Public Works through its Finance Director to sign the appropriate documents. On December 3, 2009, a letter of credit was issued by Fifth Third Bank for one, slightly over $1 million. The letter of credit provides financial assistance to the state, assurance to the State of Michigan for the cost of closure, post-closure maintenance, and monitoring for the solid waste disposal facility known as the South Kent Landfill. The Michigan Department of Environmental Quality is named beneficiary on this letter of credit. As new cells are constructed at the landfill, additional financial assurance is required when new cells are certified with the State of Michigan. On December 13, 2012, a letter of credit was amended and increased to the current amount of $1.5 million. There's a cell that is currently under construction at the South Kent Landfill and will be certified with the State later this year. The additional six acres of the newly constructed cell will increase the financial assurance requirement by about $250,000, and the Department of Public Works staff is requesting a line of credit be increased to $1.4 million to cover this at cost of 75 basis points annually. This approval supersedes all prior approvals concerning a letter of credit for the cost of closure, post-closure maintenance, and monitoring the solid waste disposal facility known as the South Kent Landfill as required by the State of Michigan.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Commissioner Morgan, is there support?
Support.
Fisher Jones, are there questions or comments? Commissioner Bukowski?
My comment is I smarted off at the Board of Public Works where this was originally approved, that I, you know, we've got tens of millions of dollars in the bank, and this is such a teeny part of our 360, 370 million dollar budget. But to spend $10,000 for a line of credit that will be, it's such a small amount compared to the risk that we have and all the insurances, and it's mandated by the State of Michigan that we have this line of credit. So talk about an easy fix, and it's $10,000 to get a piece of paper that says we can get a million and a half if we need it. I'm sorry. That should make more of us pull our hair out. So I will support it because we have to do it, but by gout, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say.
Some of us have more hair to pull out than others.
Commissioner Morgan?
Bernie pulled it out.
So this is an existing line of credit, and we're just amending it because we're building a new cell, and we gotta cover that. So this is existing, right? When does that existing line of credit expire? December of 16.
Yeah. Another year.
Go ahead.
Just caveat, that does have to be renewed, does it not?
Renewed and renewed.
Yes.
But it's existing.
This one is, yeah.
Got it. Just trying to get my arms around this.
Commissioner Mass?
So just to, just to be, get a little more education about it. So every cell, which is, looks like it's about six acres, or up to six acres, so that's, so we have 37 cells out there. Does each of those cells require a letter of credit? A million dollars? Am I asking too many detailed questions? Because this is for self, this is a new one that's starting, so we got a million four.
Good morning, Kim.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Not every cell has to be certified. It's the landfill as a whole, and when we increase the acreage, we have to increase it based on the financial assurance that's required. So not every cell, it's not like 35, we have 35 lines of credit. It's just that we need more money to cover the financial assurance that the state requires.
And they, and they basically have to be maintained the whole life of that landfill?
Correct.
Well, I suppose that prevents us from getting into the bind we are with the other landfills that we have. Doesn't it? I mean?
No. No.
Oh.
Because...
Do you want to get that value from it?
We don't want, come to the Board of Public Works, and we'll give you those details. We're into the weeds. Sorry for ranting.
We'll, we'll talk offline.
Other questions? Other questions? Commissioner Coleman?
I'd just like to add my support to Commissioner Bukowski's rant this morning. I agree.
Well, Commissioner Bukowski is beginning to sound like his brother. Not the one, not the one that you guys know. Any other questions or comments? I see none, so we'll call the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We next move to Agenda Item Number Six, which is an action request by the Kent County Public Court.
This is a request to recommend to the Board to authorize the Board Chair or his designate to sign all funding agreements related to the guardianship program subject to legal approval and to approve $197,000 to the 2015 special project fund budget for the guardianship program. For many years, the probate court, Kent County Department of Health and Human Services, an area agency on aging of Western Michigan, have collaborated to operate a public guardianship program for indigent adults in the county. Recently, the Department of Health and Human Services has determined that one adult protective services worker that performed the duties of the guardianship monitor will no longer be permitted to supervise the program. Further, the State has determined that the County Department of Health and Human Services should not receive lapsed guardianship funds from other parts of the state. These two factors have contributed to an unsustainable program which cannot accept additional indigent guardianship cases and appropriately recruit and supervise new guardians. This decrease in state funding has caused various challenges for Spectrum Health and St. and Mercy Health St. Mary's, including significant financial losses when discharging certain patients for unavailable, for unavailability of guardians. As such, they have approached the probate court about possible ways to increase availability of public guardians and to offer their support to the program. After discussions between the guardianship program partners, Spectrum Health and Mercy Health, St. Mary's have each agreed to provide $50,000 annually for a period of three years to the county to support the program. Area Agency on Aging of Western Michigan agrees to recommend an annual allocation of $52,442 in senior millage funds to the county for adult guardianship services to indigent clients above the age of 60 residing in the county, and the Human Services County Fund program's budget will allocate $44,888 to support the program's services. All agreements will be reviewed and approved by Assistant Clerk of Counsel prior to execution.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt by Commissioner Mass? Is there support by Commissioner Bukowski? Questions or comments? Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This sounds like another one-off marquee program initiated by Kent County. Is there any other programs similar to this in the state? And how long you been working on this?
Well, we...
That's a lot of questions, Wayne.
Yeah. Let me, let me take the first one. We've been working on this, the second one, for about a year now, actually more attentively for the last six months. There is no other program like this in the state. Kent County has, for a long time, made this a priority and a commitment to support the indigent guardian needs, and we have, have enjoyed a wonderful partnership with probate court and, of course, DHS. We've, yeah, this is unique and different. We sometimes get blamed for having these unique programs, sometimes undermines what maybe we get from the state, but we're gonna continue to keep this in front. If the Board supports this and approves this, we'll continue to provide this wonderful service to the citizens of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Other questions? Commissioner Mass?
Yeah, this is one example of a program that's, that's, that's a good program, certainly. And we've struggled for years with getting enough funding for, for guardians. The State has struggled for years. Now, they just kinda throw up their hands and give it back to the counties. So, I mean, unfortunately, I would suspect every county is running into difficulties, aren't they? And we're, we're able to step forward because we've got a good senior millage, we've got a good probate court. Yes, and you serve on the Millage Review Committee, of course. We'll wear the program how it fits in with all the other programs we do for seniors. The State had moved the worker to the central office. They've centralized a lot of the services that we once were able to benefit from, from the Adult Services Department. Nancy Marshall heads that program. She's here today. Unfortunately, she's continued to advocate for this program and has worked diligently with us to make sure that we work on the partnerships that, that have come to form. So I would say that local DHS has been very supportive of the program. State DHS has changed their model or actually made us more like the other counties in terms of how we apply the supports in the, in the Adult Services Program.
Commissioner Bukowski?
Thank you. So again, the, in the second bullet point, when it says DHHS has determined that, that means the State Office has determined that? And so again, that, that changes are being made in Lansing, saying that we can't use these dollars in spite of their effectiveness locally. We can't anymore. Okay. I thought that was the answer. Sorry. I'll be, I'll keep my blood pressure down. And then I was curious why, where, that it says that this is a mandated activity?
It's non-mandated. For some reason, it got checked in the wrong box. It's actually non-mandated.
Okay. And what do other counties do then with, with folks in this situation? Do they fund it from their general fund, or they...
Let's have Susan Flack from the probate court explain that.
Susan Flack, the register or probate? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, other counties do have a variety of things. Some counties have actually a county employee who acts as a public guardian. Other counties, in other counties, there are independent organizations like Guardian Inc. or Mid-Michigan Guardian Services, and the State contracts with them and pays those organizations $60 a month to provide guardian services for indigent people, $60 per month per ward for X number of wards. The State also has a similar funding program here, which is not appropriated in this document, but basically, last year, the State paid, in addition to providing the guardian monitor position at DHS, paid another $46,000 toward guardian fees for the actual guardians to do the work. And we expect, we don't have the number yet, but we expect that there will be something similar for the fiscal year of the state beginning 10/1. Some other counties rely totally on volunteers, which requires management, for example, Oakland has an employee who supervises guardians, so.
Thank you. Other questions? Commissioner Mass?
Well, so I was trying to figure out, in this document, the proposal, you've got 14 budget, 15 budget, and then you don't have a 16 budget, except it's listed in the proposed solution. Are the amount of funds going up as well? So how would we, how would we put that, how would we put a new column?
The appropriations that are in the action request are the remainders, what's left of the 2015 money from the human services appropriation and from senior millage, and does not include the new state money that would start October 1. The new money that's coming into the program is the $50,000 per year from St. Mary's and Spectrum, and we have representatives of St. Mary's and Spectrum here with us. Julie Lundvik is Director of Clinical Services with St. Mary's, and William Jewell is Chief Counsel?
General Counsel.
General Counsel for Spectrum. And so they would be putting in $50,000 per year for a total of $100,000. Out of that $100,000, we would be able to pay for the cost of the person who will be the guardian monitor, who will supervise the program, and that's the position that DHS is saying we can no longer provide. So, and we would be doing this via donated funds position, so we actually would use a Spectrum, pardon me, a DHHS employee under a contract, so we're reimbursing DHHS for their employee. And the remainder of the $100,000 would be available to pay for fees for guardians for cases that we now cannot accept. Right now, we've had sufficient funding for seniors, as long as the person's over 60, with our senior millage money. We've, we've been able to take those kind of cases, but we have not been able to take cases for individuals who are under 60 or otherwise didn't meet the senior millage requirements. This will enable us to do that.
For Commissioner Mass, the 2016 budget has in it the funds that we normally will receive from the Human Services Fund, plus we've got dollars identified from the senior millage now. We know that the committee meets soon, will be reviewing requests. We think that there will be an additional amount requested through the senior millage based on the, the need. So it'll be more, the, right now, it's $100,000. That's coming from the senior.
It's not, it's 102,560, I think, for 16.
It says 100, 100,00585.
That was 15.
Yes. So 16.
16 is 102, 102,650.
Only 2,000?
Are.
Okay.
We have, we haven't used our entire 100,000 for 15, so.
Because it has to be for, for people over 60.
Correct.
Well, it's a good program. I mean, I... Could I so maybe have Bill Jewell come up and just comment? I really appreciate the fact that Spectrum's here. Also, Judy, if you'd come up instead of Bill Mans, the President of St. Mary's, stop up for a minute and just...
Absolutely.
...talk about your situation.
Good morning. Good morning. Thanks for allowing us to have a few minutes of time to speak to you. This is a very important program. I can speak from personal experience in the multiple times I've had to become engaged and try to find somebody who can speak with authority on behalf of a patient of ours who has been deemed without capacity to make healthcare decisions, very important decisions, and it has impacts in multiple ways. And yes, of course, financial, because we can't get this person in the right place, best care is, because we don't have the legal authority to speak for that person, and if we want to, say, get that person transferred to a post-acute facility where it's the most appropriate place for them to be in terms of care and utilization, we have a hard time doing that if we don't have a guardian to speak for that patient. And, you know, oftentimes, hopefully, you can get family involved, and a family member could become a guardian, but many, many times, and I'm sure it's the same experience at St. Mary's, we don't have a family member available or one that would be appropriate to step up and be that guardian, and then we're stuck. The court doesn't have the ability to just, you know, pull somebody out of nowhere. Without this public guardianship program, people would suffer, and not only in terms of what's appropriate for them and their, and their care, but for us financially. This is why Spectrum and St. Mary's, too, I'm sure, is willing to partner with the community, with the county, to try to make this program work. It is vital, and it's vital for our community, vital for, vital for our patients. It's not just a financial issue. Of course, it is financial, but I think it's extremely important for our community and our people to try to make this work and get people in the right place with the right care. Certainly wanted to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Bukowski? Well, definitely thank you for, for stepping up to fill the gap, but from the grand scheme of things, almost nothing will change as it relates to, we have the current program and it's operating, and then it will look the same on October 1 on the street as opposed, I mean, the funding's shifting, I get that. So the State used, what I understand is that the State used to support the position through DHHS, then the State says we can't do that, and then through Spectrum and St. Mary's making this gift, we're able to purchase those services from the State of Michigan. So in essence, it's pretty much the same thing.
We are hoping that it is the same basic structure, but better.
Correct.
Because it would be run now.
Not toys, please.
All right, awesome. Yeah.
So I can actually add to that. They, we have seen a decrease in the number of people that are able to be guardians, and a lot of it is trying to recruit guardians, maintain them, which is, it does really require an expertise and stuff to do that. At St. Mary's, we saw our number of days that the patients remained in the hospital, I mean, go up to 120 days. We're basically providing custodial care where they're there, and then I know both Spectrum and St. Mary's are seeing huge growth, and those beds are being taken up by others. So there has been actually a gap somewhat, and we're hoping that with this new program or with the additional funds, we can recruit more guardians, which we need to. Also, there's a faster turnaround when we are managing it a little bit better, or our county is, that we can see faster, so we can get these people out. We really do, many of them need to be ruled out the first couple of days to determine if there's anything else, try to find family members, but it is becoming harder and harder to find family members and stuff to be guardians, again, that are competent to do that. And I definitely, we work really hard with our long-term care facilities, our sub-acute, and we can't, even though they may have beds and we can get them out, we can't unless there is the guardian. So to answer your question, no, I do think there'll be a change. I think there will be a faster, rapid turnover and better management of it so that we can kind of maintain that, so.
Do you vet the guardians, and does this change how that was done before, given the change in funding?
We do vet to a certain extent, again, trying to find immediate families and so forth, but within the first few days, we can tell after that that there isn't anybody that's able, and then we reach out to Kent County and say, "We're going to need public guardian for this." Even if they assess and they're involved and we do find somebody, we will still use that first, because we don't want to abuse the system. I will comment, too, it, we are really, really struggling from over 18 to under 60. There are more and more people that are under that 60-year age, which I have senior care services, and you'd think it would be the older, but we're really seeing those other people because of psych problems, you know, behavioral issues and so forth, that family members just don't want to deal with them anymore, and we need help, which is sad, but that is the reality.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you. Other questions? Commissioner Bukowski?
Thank you. Last quick piece, though, and if it's a flat rate of sixty dollars per person, I mean, how much of that is the insurmountable barrier? Because at a professional rate of sixty, you know, sixty dollars an hour is pretty cheap. Of course, you're not gonna get an attorney for sixty dollars an hour. Or not, not very many attorneys. And then even if it's thirty dollars an hour, that's two hours per month with that person. And as you pointed out, I mean, this is pretty complicated stuff and to figure it out. And then, and again, just, just the whole medical world is, I'll leave it at that. That's why I'm a community organizer, not a doctor. But anyways...
The guardians do incredible work for sixty dollars or fifty-five dollars per month. And the way our program is structured, guardians have these indigent cases and they have paying cases. So the thought, and we try to evenly distribute the paying cases. We call them the estate cases. And they get paid a good hourly rate and a monthly fee on those cases. And that makes up for the extra work frequently that's involved in these indigent cases that is just not compensated. I mean, to a large extent, it's just paying their expenses.
Right. All right, thank you.
Fisher Jones?
Thank you Chair. I just had a quick question on the letter of commitment that Mercy Health provided right before we started this meeting. And the question's for Wayman. Did you see this, Wayman?
Yeah.
Can you address who's going to fulfill one through seven? Who does that? Who actually gets them the year-end reports, the number of guardians recruited and trained?
That'll be the guardian monitor that will be housed in the probate court. Actually, the person from DHS that will be contracting with DHS to maintain that. They will work with Susan Flackney.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I see none. Thank you Spectrum. Thank you St. Mary's, Mercy Health. And thank you Susan for the information and the work you're doing. So we'll call the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is miscellaneous. Is there any Commissioner miscellaneous today? Commissioner Morgan?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I was wondering if Wayman could give us a brief update on this Monster HUD grant that he's working on. Matthew or...
To repave the river, that one?
I'd know.
We can have Matthew come up and give a quick update. We were, we've had numbers meetings this past week. We were at Ada Township last night, met with Senator Peters yesterday. Lots of work going on. We're working towards grant submission end of October. A ton of work, but maybe you could address it a little bit more detail.
It's exciting, very exciting. We are working right now with MEDC on cost-benefit analysis for the projects that we've submitted to them to ensure that they'll meet the threshold recipient HUD, and that they'll be well received. We've identified this kind of as a showcase application for our, for the grant competition. Much of the work we're seeing on Google Alerts is for smaller amounts of funding than what we're gonna be seeking for. And so we really have what we're calling a grant strategy to look at the river and how we manage water here in our community and the flood, potential flood damages that come forth. What I learned about this so far is that the flood in thirteen was only a twenty-five-year flood event. So we all remember downtown here and the fish in that building, the Cheese Lake Building over here on Pearl. There's a lot of water we manage. Another little fact is that the river, Grand River, two-point-eight times increases in volume by the time it enters Kent County and Lowell, by the time it exits in Granville. So we produce a lot of water and manage a lot of water here. So this gives us an opportunity to really use natural features and grow Ada and Cascade. We were meeting with, we've been meeting with vulnerable communities, part of the ENTF. The county has an investment in the Essential Needs Task Force. And we've started meeting with them, getting feedback. Downtown Grand Rapids, Inc., City, Wright Place. And the county hosted meetings yesterday with our local Kent County leadership in Lansing. And we met with Senator Peters yesterday to have him assist us hopefully in DC recruiting. We've talked to Representative DeWitt's staff, Representative Heisinga's staff and John DeWitt. They're really excited about the opportunity. So the collaboration, the public-private partnerships are going well. And, you know, we'll know more about our final application in the near future. But we're happy to answer any questions in the meantime that you might have.
We're also planning for a public forum of some sort to get the community out, to answer any questions that the community has and to provide input. That's one of the requirements of the grant, as well as going to various municipalities and getting opportunity to get in front of them to answer any questions that they have, so. Thank you.
Any questions? Any other, or any other Commissioner miscellaneous? Okay, I see none. Our next meeting is October sixth at seven-thirty AM work session. Until then, we are adjourned.